Raul?
Raul?
If you could come up and say the pledge for us. Yep, go ahead and speak right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate it. It's always good when a Boy Scouts in the room, we can have them say the pledge. Jenny, if you can take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here. Coram is present. This time, motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. We do have one presentation, and I'll turn it over to city manager. If you can introduce the presenter, that'd be great.
Yeah, we have Eagle Scout project for the wood duck houses, and Raul Pfizer will be presenting.
Raul, you can come on back up to the podium, and thank you for coming. It looks like a great project that you've been working on, and my son is also an Eagle Scout, so very proud of—parents gotta be pretty proud of you, so go ahead, and you got the mic.
Yeah. Do I use this thing to start the presentation?
Uh... Wait.[108.08][108.08](Laughter)
What? Um, I think so. Um... Oh.
Yep, you got it.
Okay. Okay, so my presentation is on wood duck houses in North St. Paul as my Eagle project. I'm Raul Pfizer. I'm a member of Troop 462, which is based in Little Canada. Here's the next slide. So, a little bit about wood ducks. They're commonly found bird near lakes and wood potholes. They rest in hollow trees and similar sheltered areas, as they do not build their own nests. And wood duck populations had become nearly extinct because of habitat loss from the loss of these old dead trees. And a bit of history about the wood duck houses themselves. In 1937, the Fish and Wildlife Service built nearly 500 of these wood duck houses in Illinois, and these wood duck houses were actually very beneficial for the wood duck population. Wood structures are preferred, since they allow the ducklings to actually climb out of the box and exit, and there are a number of ways to protect the hens and clutches from predators. And in my proposal, I'll be using two sets of pipes, which prevent predators from climbing up into the boxes. So here I have a picture of the plan for the wood duck houses, and this method has been used by David Nelson multiple times. And the size of these wood duck houses are about a foot—wide a foot, long, and about two and a half feet tall. So, there are currently wood duck houses at Southwood Nature Reserve, and I'll be emulating these designs. But one wood duck house at Southwood actually needs to be replaced, and that's what I'll be attempting to do in addition to building other ones at Casey Lake Park. So as I mentioned in the project plan, it'll be to build five ducks at duck houses at Casey Lake Park and replace one at Southwood. And then any extra materials would be used to create extra wood duck houses to be used by other people. And so those five white Xs are the locations of the wood duck houses at Casey Lake Park. I went to Casey Lake Park about a month ago and kind of mapped out where I should put the wood duck houses. So this house spacing was chosen because they needed to be very close to the water. We needed about 50 feet between each wood duck house to avoid competition, and then they needed to be at least about 25 feet from any docks, piers, or any other paths that kind of go towards the water. And if any of the houses are left empty, reganzers will use the available duck houses. So cost estimate, it costs about $430 for the six houses. That comes out to about $70 per house, and I'll be fundraising through a GoFundMe page. And materials list, the big things that we will be using, wood pallets that will be reused, and then contact cement and rubber membrane go on the top for the roofs. Metal posts and PVC pipes go into the ground to prevent predators from climbing up. And then hardware cloth allows the ducklings to actually get up and out of the box. And then screws, nails, nuts, and bolts will just hold the actual construction together. As I mentioned, I'll be using old wood pallets, which would have been thrown away otherwise. And each year, old nesting material must be removed and replaced with a fresh layer of wood shavings. And that's the only maintenance that needs to be done. And since this is a pretty low-maintenance project, just about once a year, I hope it'll be a long-lasting project. Thank you for your consideration. Any questions of any sort?
Very good presentation. Kind of curious, so you got one that is being built in Southwood? The gentleman who made that, was it— is it like falling apart that you gotta replace that? Or... I know Dave Nelson can't hear me right now, so he's just kind of sitting back there. Is there a reason why that one needs to be replaced?
The roof escaped him.
Okay. I'm just giving you a hard time. I'm giving Dave more of a hard time than you. No, great, great presentation. Any questions for Raul?
Are you gonna stop some checks? Send some check?
I mean, sure.[433.14][433.14](Laughter)
So GoFundMe page, that sounds like you can raise either little money, or you can raise a lot of money.
Exactly, yes.
You put a stop on it when you start, like raising $100,000 for these?
Yes, I don't expect that to happen, however.[455.94][455.94](Laughter)
That'd be good. Again, great project, I think, you know, having them at Casey Lake. Do we have them down there at Casey Lake right now? We don't have any, so yeah, good, good project for that.
Would you be able to send the link to your GoFundMe page to us?
Yeah, I would be able to.
Thank you.
Be a good idea. Good idea.
Yeah, Raul, awesome job. This is the third time that you and I have met and had the opportunity to go through this with you. I just want to commend you on the preparation and where you are in comparison to some of your peers that have been in front of us. You've done a tremendous, tremendous job. The only other thing that I wanted to touch on was something that was brought up when we had met earlier and when we met with Park and Rec. There was conversation and consideration put around, should we have educational signing someplace around the Casey Lake area to let others who are on the walking path be able to see the signs? Location could be split rail fence, slightly in front of the fence, but that was one of the things that was discussed at the Park and Rec. And if it was something that the commission wanted to go forward with, they would make the recommendations that the funding for the signage come from the Park and Rec department.
Or that GoFundMe page.
Or the GoFundMe page, yeah.
Good. Well, good, good job, and I congratulate you, and I hope this project goes well, and your future is ahead of you, and having that Eagle Scout behind you is gonna do a lot for you in your life. And a lot of times you don't realize it, but that's one thing that follows you as any of your resumes, whatever, and people do look at that at a very serious, very serious way, so, good.
Do we need to make a motion to approve it, or is it...
We could.
I can't remember.
I would, just so it's clear that there's permission been granted to the boxes where he's proposing.
You want to make that motion?
I've never made a motion before. We'll wing it.
Oh, wait, I'll make it. I'll—okay, I'll make—well, I was gonna say—
When I said wing it, that made you nervous?
So the motion is for the project down at Southwood Nature Preserve and Casey Lake for the building of six, I believe, six— is it six houses?
Yep, six.
Six houses? Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You got it. Motion carries, so thank you, and good luck down there, and if you need help, get him.
I'm looking at the guy in the back corner with all the tools.
Yeah, thank you all.
Yep, thank you. Good luck.
You can email Carrie the link to your GoFundMe page, and I'm sure she'll get that on our website, too, so...
So this time, we have the consent agenda. That is the September 14th special council meeting minutes for the 2022 budget. September 15th, special council meeting minutes. September 15th, September 21st, workshop meeting minutes. September 21st, regular meeting minutes. September 21st, HRA meeting minutes. General claims of $2,874,812.19. The HRA claims of $1,004.13. Application for temporary on-sale liquor license, and application for charitable gambling for exempt permit for the North Star Scouting Memorabilia, Inc. Approve the ordinance, amending title 11, Chapter 12 pertaining to bingo and charitable gambling. Set public hearing date for special assessments for unpaid city bills on October 26. And the McKnight Road intersection improvements, final project payment. At this time, anyone can pull an item from the consent agenda?
Can I pull item J, please?
Which one?
J.
J?
Yeah, I just have a question.
We'll pull item J. And we'll add that to the city business and action items. So at this time, motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. This time, we have the meeting open to the public, and I've got four people here. First one, RT. Welcome, RT.
Good to see everyone again. First and foremost, gratitude. Wanted to express thanks to Mr. Frandl here. Got the elevator fixed. Thank you Candy Peterson for coming out and taking a ride. Oof! But we do appreciate that getting fixed. And the other, there's a little bit of work that's going on right now, we do appreciate it. Gratitude for all the time that has been spent on the community center in the past however many months. Really appreciate that, and need to be truthful. We're disappointed at times, we go through this process. It's been challenging, and it's been challenging based on the experiences that we've had with the city. I'm gonna give you a quick history, very short, back—
You've got three minutes.
Yeah. Last spring—I'll go as fast as I can. Last spring, overheard the former city manager talking to the food shelf unbeknownst. That means sitting in a different area of the building, but I overheard some things about how while the city, at that time, the direction from the council was to sell the building and negotiate with us, that he was meeting with them to discuss other options and possibly leasing the facility, et cetera. I confronted him on that matter immediately. I also spoke with Mayor Furlong immediately and asked them what their 5:00 PM Zoom meeting was about that day with the food bank. During that meeting that I overheard, there was the deadline of June 30th put out there that the food shelf could enter the facility. It's a little bit of history, and it leads into the rest of the story here. So go into the first closed session, which is now open. Everybody can hear those sessions that happened the next day. And the former city manager had mentioned that he had an idea, and his idea was to have the food shelf in there, and that he hadn't taken any action upon it yet. That wasn't true. He had met with them previously, and the mayor knew, too. I'm not—to be clear, when I'm making these statements, I'm not accusing anyone of anything. I'm just saying, this is our experience, and I want you to understand our experience, and that'll help enlighten you as to why we're asking for the type of communication and the type of process that we're asking for right now. So that occurred, those closed sessions occurred, I listened to all of them, and the council changed direction. And that's totally the council's right to do, no problem. You change direction, you want a lease, that's fine. So, we go into lease negotiations, and we go out of town for our national tournament. We had something from Attorney Soren's office on our desk at the time, and I received an email yesterday that we hadn't acted upon it. On July 6th, right when we came back, we got back in the office on the 5th. We came to a council meeting and said, hey, we're back, we want to sit down, negotiate with you. Mayor Furlong appointed Councilmember Wong and Councilmember Cole to have those negotiations with us. So, we met one time, gave them a tour of the facility, and they were going to get back to us with information after they gathered information. And I'm assuming that's what this next meeting is going to be about. Not that there is a lease, I mean, currently, the letter that we received basically states we have not engaged in the process. We're way behind on responding to something we didn't know we needed to respond to, because the mayor's direction was to have Councilmembers Cole and Wong start this process. It actually says that in the meeting—in the minutes from that meeting, to have them at the table and start the process. That's what it said. That's frustrating when we hear or get an email like that, that basically is kind of accusing us of not participating in a process, that we've been engaged in the whole time and have been asking to be a part of the whole time. And then we find out that previously, things were going on that we didn't know about, that the council didn't know about. That the council was being told in those closed sessions that there was anything wrong with the facility according to the appraisal, and now on the budget for next year, you have $650,000 in improvements for that facility. Those things don't align. So this is where we are right now, and I just want you to understand that. I'm not asking you to do anything different. I'm not asking for anything other than you guys coming and working with us. That was what I said in the last email that I sent to Mr. Frandl. I said, hey, we're here. Here are the things that occurred. We want to meet with you, we want to meet with Councilmember Cole, and Wong, and Brian, and if Soren wants to be there, Soren's welcome to be there, too. But we want to sit down and have this discussion. So that's where we are right now. I don't have much else, but I want you guys to understand why we are where we are. And that June 30th thing came back in other ways in a different email, and like it felt like we were being pushed out at the time, and like that's not what the mayor has said. He said, we're a valuable part of this community, and you want us to stay, and we want to, too. So that's where we want to be. We want to get to that place where we can continue to be a valuable part of the community.
And I hope, RT, that you can work with Soren and Brian as you move forward, because that's the direction of the council, is that you're gonna work with those two.
And that's fine. Then my question is, is when I've been at these meetings, why hasn't Councilmember Cole or Wong said, hey, we've had discussions, and the direction of the council is now for Brian and Attorney Soren to take over this matter?
Well, I think that's always been the intent, is to have them work with the city manager and the city attorney, to work with the contract. It's always been the intent of the council.
Okay, so then, what you're saying is back when, back in July, whatever, when you said that they should sit down at the table, that that wasn't a part of their—
Sit at the table with—they—they worked together.
Not with us.
Not with you.
Interesting. Because that's what we've been asking for the whole time. We've been asking for transparency and to sit down and meet with you.
And we've been asking you to work with the city attorney and the city manager.
And, okay, so let's go one other quick tangent.
And I don't want to get into debate here.
No, 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 I don't want to, but let me explain why we didn't prefer that route, because the day—
But it's not that you prefer it.
No, correct.
It's what we're—
No, I understand. But I want you—again, I just want you to understand where we're coming from. So, the day before—the Friday before Memorial Day, I did speak with Soren on the phone, and the conversation was tense at times, and at the end, I did agree that, you know what? We will send communication through your office. And during that phone call, he said, because our offer back to the city, after that initial offer that was sent to us was so different, because it was one year and we proposed nine years back, what Attorney Soren said was, hey, I'm gonna have to meet with the council because there's such a difference.
But again, you're negotiating with us right now. I mean, we're getting—
No, I'm just saying. Again, this is what happened. This is just what happened. And then I found out that didn't occur, so now I'm like, okay, well, what can I send to Soren that the council is or isn't going to get? So that's why I send things to the council entirely. And I know you can't respond, fully aware, but I just want you to have the information. That's it.
Okay.
So this is our experience, this is where we are, it's why we're communicating the way we do. Yes, I understand, when we sign on the dotted line, we gotta work with Soren and Brian. That's totally fine. But I want you to understand, so we—honestly, we want to feel heard. We want you to understand why we are where we are and how the actions of the city and the council and the attorney's office have put us in this position. That's it.
Okay.
That's it, we just want to be heard.
Thank you. Thanks, RT. Gabriel—
Boskus.
Boskus. Got it. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, thanks for the time. Basically, I'm here, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Gabriel Boskus. I'm gonna be starting a business in this town. It's gonna be called Gabriel's Fallen Angel Tattoo Studio. I worked for 25 years at Acme Tattoo on the east side, and I'm just looking forward to being a positive influence on this—on the city. I just want to say thanks for the opportunity.
I did hear rumors that you're a pretty good artist. That's what I heard.
I keep my head down, and I just keep doing what I do.
And I heard you're—
Yeah.
I heard you're really good.
Thank you.
So—
Thank you. You know, I encourage anybody to stop by, see what we got going on. It's looking good, and excuse my attire, because I've been working, you know, working all day and, you know, trying to get things going, so basically, that's it. If you guys have any questions, I'm open to it.
Where are you opening your shop?
Well, it's gonna be—it's gonna be where there was an old shop there before that never got going. And I saw that as an opportunity. It's an excellent spot. So it's gonna be at 2583, right? 2583 Seventh Avenue. Yeah, you should swing by.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I think it's gonna be good. I think it's gonna bring a lot to the city. Good, good crowd. It's a good crowd.
And you got a good reputation, I hear.
That's excellent. I worked hard for a long time. I learned from Don Nolan, and he's a world-renowned tattoo artist. He passed away a few years ago, and I was supposed to take over that shop. Well, things—it didn't happen. So that's why I wanted to come here and start something new and fresh and just be part of this, you know, good town. We used to come here—him and I used to come here for all the car shows, because he was a hot rod and bikes, and we'd come down here, and I'd say, wow, this is a nice place. So, thank you, and—
Wish you luck, and—
Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations, and—
Thank you.
I might stop by, you may not get a tattoo on me, but at least I'll stop and say hi.
You know, just come check it out and see what we got going on. I'm looking at opening, you know, ASAP.
Okay.
I don't know if you noticed, but I've been there lately—I've been there every day, just trying to get stuff done, and I know I've talked to you before, and— Plenty of people. I've been—I've been trying to make my rounds in the city and trying to just meet people. You know, I've talked to the police, the fire department, the other businesses, so yeah. So that's me. If you want to talk anymore, come down there and we can chat.
Sounds good.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. John Schmall. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Does anyone remember the days of these handouts? They were good. And we didn't have to do like—
What?
And even Councilmember Thorson did it at the last meeting.
What?
So, maybe we can get something like this handed out as a handout that's easy to follow, that's readable by people with—at my age, who isn't going to come in with his cheaters, because he doesn't want to carry another something in his hands. But I found these things to be very helpful in trying to follow what's going on and not looking at that from the side of the room. The only place you can really see it is to come up here and see it, or come up here and see it. From back there, it's tough. It's really tough. Anyway, and then frustration with your technology, especially this darn Civic Plus, and when you go to the agenda items, the packet items, you have to use the plus up on top. You can't use your fingers, but when you get to the agenda first, that's how you expand it. You use your fingers. And then you get into the packet, and you gotta go plus, plus. Is that big enough? No, that's not big. Plus, 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 plus. When you could just go whoop, like this, and there it is, and you could bring it back, and you could go over to the side and see what the subject was, and do, you know, quickly follow what's going on here. But with this system, it really sucks for someone who's trying to follow on a device. It doesn't work very well. And maybe it's my age and inability to go like this, when you could just go easily like this. And you bought a program that I think is not very user-friendly, especially in this situation. And then a specific item we had at the workshop, the 2022 CIP, and you had—and this is on my device, trying to follow it, at 200% expanded, which isn't big enough. But the— The item was—now, it went away—was color-coded on the sheet—one sheet, with a map that you had to go up and find. And I expected that the color-coded subjects and the money and whatnot would be coded on the map, because I was interested in the parking lots. Where are these parking lots you're gonna work on? And the parking lot area with the money that is going to be spent was coded in tan. So, hey, I'm going to be able to go down to the map and look for the tan areas, and this is where the parking lots are going to be worked on. Wrong. Map isn't color-coded. So, just trying to tell you, it's very, very frustrating trying to follow along with what's happening in this room. Very frustrating. And as a last item, it's not cool to blow your leaves into the street. And I think maybe you ought to put it into the electronic newsletter. Thank you.
Make a note. Thank you, John. Dave Nelson. You can talk about the birdhouse that you hit fell apart, or—
No. I don't know if I can stand up to these guys, but— Anyway, Southwood, I've been a master naturalist, my wife and Vic and Vivian, for 14 years or more. We're working down there now. My capstone was the first acre where we're trying to restore it so it looks like North St. Paul when Henry Castle rode in on his horse. We put a pollinator garden in there, and we've been working on it for three years. And I talked to the guy that does the spraying, the owner. I says, I want you guys to stay out of certain areas, because we put $500 out of our own pockets in plants in here, and what they do, they spray and kill them.
Did you talk about—is this the same problem that was—
The same problem? Again, who's controlling these guys that are—or who's paying the check to these guys for spraying when they can go in there in a backpack rather than run through? The pollinator garden that we had for the monarchs and that, they run right straight through. The fumes and the stuff on there, the leaves on there, curled up like this. Now, that's three years down the drain that we worked on. We're volunteering, trying to get this stuff back to where it's for nature and for people to enjoy. I do not appreciate somebody with their four-wheeler going—because they're two— I do not appreciate somebody with their four-wheeler going, because they're too lazy with a backpack or a little Hudson sprayer, just to spot spray certain areas. But when they spray, I was down there one time when they sprayed. There's a mist. What did it do? It hit some of our plants that we put out. We even took and put barrels and marked the stuff where they're not to spray. Well, the mists kill them anyway. But I mean, who's paying the, who's signing the check? Who's okaying them to spray that area when I told them, I don't want you in there this year?
I'm assuming it's the task force that, are they the ones?
I don't know.
Approving it?
I don't know.
I don't think the city, yeah, where the city's not doing it. It's the task force, the Southwood Nature Task Force that is in charge of the park. That's, you know.
They refuse to let us know when they go to spray anymore.
Well, it's, we gotta have better communication between what you're doing there and the, and the task force.
Because there's four of us, Vic and Vivian, my wife and I, we've been working in there.
And you're not part of the task force?
No. But I mean, uh, this been going on for five, six years. And I, I even caught the guys out there. I says, can you please stay away from this area?
Well, Dave, I'll, I'll personally reach out to the task force, because it's not the city that's, that's doing it.
And that, and like the, the pollinators, the, uh, monarchs and that, like, they migrate south. Texas, they had to freeze. We lost a lot of them there. And the bluebirds, if you notice, there's hardly no bluebirds back. Uh, my daughter is, uh, works for the federal government. And the bluebirds, the study that they did, 70% of them froze out in Texas, because that's where they winter. Plus, there's a few other birds that come back that froze out there. And, uh, we used to have at least three pairs that would have fledgings. Only had one bird come back this year.
My daughter lives in Texas, and when that snowstorm hit, uh,
Yeah.
all the plants down there never came, a lot of the plants never came back.
Yeah, a lot of the birds never come back. But, you know, we're trying to restore it so everybody can enjoy it, because people comment, they go, oh, we really like this. And that, uh, but not when they're, they're killing the plants.
I'll reach out to.
If you cannot appreciate it, if not else, tell them to stay the heck out of there.
Yep. Sounds good, Dave.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. There's nobody else? Anybody on Zoom?
We have somebody, but they've still logged off.
Oh, good. We have no public hearings. We do have one item for the city business and action item. And I'll ask Councilmember Cole, or, uh, not Cole, but Wong, in regards to Jay. Set the public hearing date for special assessments. You have a question on that?
Yeah, so, thank you. Um, it's more about, um, just trying to understand how these are addressed on a normal basis or throughout the year before the property taxes are, you know, considered or the assessments are considered. Is there some?
I think that's a good answer for Finance Director.
Uh, Councilmember Wong, uh, if there are outstanding balances throughout the year, you know, part of their utility billing, it'll say on there that you have an outstanding balance. And there's actually notifications that are given out and calls that are made trying to, to get, um, the resident to contact, uh, the city to make arrangements for, for payment. Unfortunately, there's just some, um, that, uh, you know, um, do not contact the city to make arrangements for, for payment. And that's where this, this, uh, statute 429 allows the, the city to have a public hearing and then to, um, have them assessed on the property taxes.
Do you know what the barriers are in terms of why people may not respond or are not, yeah, responding to the city's outreach?
Um, I, offhand, I don't, I, I can't answer that question. Um, there's actually very few properties that are actually included on this list. Um, but definitely will be something that I'll follow up on and, and bring back to the city council, um, at the time of the public hearing.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm just thinking that, um, that we're in the pandemic, that some of the, um, utility benefits that were allocated, I believe they expanded, um, some of the eligibility for repayment on those. And if there's a way to recoup that for the benefit of the resident and for the city, then that would be, you know, I think, a really great resolution. That's all. Yeah.
No, uh, thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Wong. Definitely will look into those. I, I think right now there's, there's, um, less than a, some are, I'm gonna say, less than a dozen properties that are on the, the delinquent.
I think that's pretty good.
It, it is. Yeah, it really is.
So if you compare to other years, I guess I'd like to see, you know, how does it compare other years? You know, when, when this happens, it's, it, uh, is it pretty average, you know?
Yeah, actually, this is a little bit more on the, the lower side than some of the frequent, or in the past years. But there really isn't a, a great deal, um, of, of properties that are, that come to this, this point. Most of the residents will reach out. And, and again, I think the city staff does an excellent job, um, on the utility side, where they're continuously reaching out, phone calls, notices. Um, and, um, most of the residents will contact us back and make some sort of arrangements. Um, and, and they're very accommodating. And, and, um, you know, the city has had, um, no penalties throughout the, the COVID time period, um, for the residents. So, I mean, there's been a lot of accommodations that have been made. But I, I think in any jurisdiction, there's, there's always going to be just some of those, those stragglers that, um, you know, that we, we just can't reach. Um, and, and this is kind of the avenue for that. So hopefully by, um, this notice will get published in, um, the newspaper. And in addition, we'll be giving notices to each one of the property owners, um, at the same time. And hopefully, you know, we'll get contacted, um, you know, from them. But, um, yeah, definitely we'll look at, um, if there's any other avenue to try to recoup some of these costs and so forth. And then also look at it, if there happens to be some sort of a barrier that we're just not reaching and connecting with them. So.
Yeah, thank you and your team for your work. Um, you know, sometimes I think maybe language could be a barrier as well. But, I mean, overall, if the rates are going down, that's a really wonderful thing to hear. So thank you.
Okay, so the motion is for resolution scheduling a public hearing for October 26th to consider special assessments related to unpaid bills due to the city. Is there a motion? Moved by Councilmember Peterson? Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, City Manager Frandl, anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick note. We're gonna be scheduling flu shots again for, um, city employees. We'll hold one again during business hours, and then we'll hold one in the evening as well for the rest of them. But, uh, we'll be releasing that information shortly. We're reaching out to, uh, get the, the clinic over here for one of their nurses to give the shots out again.
Okay. Is that your report, then? Uh, reports of council, commission, and committees. Councilmember Cole.
Park and Rec met, uh, in September. Uh, primary outcome of the meeting is, uh, the commission approved, uh, guidance to bring forward to, um, the, um, to the city council for the rate structure for, um, park and rec facilities, uh, both picnic areas and, and buildings, as well as, uh, a recommendation of reinstatement of damaged deposit. Uh, my expectation is we will, uh, probably see that either next meeting or the meeting thereafter by November 1st. Uh, action needs to be made before December 1st, as that's the date that residents have the opportunity to, um, start reserving, uh, at least the two structures, if not more, uh, within the city. So, uh, that will need to come forward with, uh, within the next couple of council meetings. Uh, upcoming meeting, next meeting is on 10/20 at 6:30 here in City Hall. Uh, looking forward to have Finance Director Dan come present to us the differences of the two park funds that we have and the way in which the funds, the, the park dedication funds can be spent versus some of the other funds. There's, there's confusion amongst the, the commission. So that spills over into everybody else. So, uh, we're definitely looking forward to that. Uh, next EDA meeting is next Tuesday, the 12th, here at 3 o'clock in City Hall. And that's all I've got.
Councilmember Wong.
Um, since our last meeting, um, nothing has changed with the Arts and Culture Commission. Um, we're still meeting on October 6th at 6:30, um, here in, uh, the Sandberg Room. So not the chambers, but the Sandberg Room. Um, and we're gonna continue on with kind of developing the scope and the direction of, of, um, the Arts and Culture Commission and the bylaws as well. As for the Planning Commission, um, there, uh, will be, they will be reviewing the CIP plan. Morgan will be there as well, um, to propose that. And then also the sign code update. So we are looking at what that, um, will look like, which will have some ramifications for the Arts and Culture Commission, as well as, I think, the Parks and Rec Commission as, I believe we just, there are signs in, in the, um, budget for that. So, um, that's coming up, um, on Thursday and October 7th at 6:30 here in the chambers.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I attended the Lake of Minnesota City's annual retreat. It was down in Winona. I learned a lot about eagles. We took a river, river ride. I didn't miss the parade, but I guess my picture got around town. Thanks to Councilmember Cole and Councilmember Wong. It was good to get together again with folks, uh, the new board, and I think they're in good hands. The North St. Paul Business Association, uh, meeting will be next Thursday, the 12th at Winona, the region. I don't know what we, yeah, it's off. And, uh, Minnesota Women in City Government, we're gonna do our suffrage. Women's Voting Rights, that was supposed to be done last year, because that was 100 years because of COVID. That'll be on November 19th, and that will be a virtual experience. And we're keeping the 19th Avenue neighbors on the house plans. Went by there today. Can I go by there? There's something happening. It's really going well. And the people have been appreciative of Rodney going around with the flyers. And Eric, who's the assistant principal, has been very good communicator. So there hasn't been any problems. So far, so good.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you keeping up on that.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
General Business, Councilmember Cole.
Uh, just, I, first I wanna say, had a fantastic time at the Fall Roundup Parade. It was great to see, um, everyone out, to see the sheer number of people attend. Uh, a special thanks and a big call out to Carrie for, for spearheading this whole event. That was, I think you had close to a, a hundred, uh, participants in the parade. It's gotta be one of the largest ones that the city has had in quite a while. And, uh, it was well-attended. And they, there, there were a lot of smiles on the faces of the people that I saw. Um, I had the opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting in an open house, uh, for a new adult daycare, uh, within North St. Paul. Uh, I'm sure that, um, Terry will address, uh, the mayor will address that a little more when, when it comes time for him. But, uh, it was a phenomenal opportunity. Um, learned a lot of, of them on culture and the, uh, the way that they look at their, uh, their aging adults as opposed to, uh, necessarily the way we might. Uh, we may have a few things to learn. Um, uh, I attended a, uh, a Friends of Casey Lake. It's a newly created committee. Uh, it's the, uh, the Friends of Casey Lake held, held a meeting at Casey Lake Park. Uh, it was very well-attended by both lake shore residents, as well as, um, non-property owners that did live in the area. Primary concerns that came out of it were, uh, control of the invasive cot- cotton tails that, that are growing. And how do we determine which is invasive and which is native? Uh, and how, and there's also a hybrid that's in the lake. And what, what is the, the DNR's guidance for removal of that or allowing that to continue to grow? Continued conversation, um, around the aesthetics of the lake. Uh, and the Watershed District has done a great job cleaning up the water, um, from a water quality standpoint. But now we need to address the aesthetics of the lake. The silt buildup along the shoreline, both on the north side and the south side. And who has control over the spillway that runs underneath 17th, which is County Road? Is that city property? Is that county property? There was some, some questions that were brought up along there as well, and, and weed control. Uh, it was, uh, recommended on the outcome of the meeting that there be, um, the, the Friends, I hate to chuckle, the Friends of Casey Lake attend a city council workshop sometime after the first of the year. Entendees would include the Watershed District, the DNR, the Director of the Legislative Water Hydr- Hydrologist, uh, as well as council members and one or two representatives to speak from the Friends of Casey Lake. So, um, something they wanna move forward with. They've gained traction. They've got support from both of our, uh, our local representative and senator as well, as far as, uh, what can we do to, to keep the aesthetics of the lake moving forward. Uh, and last thing I've got is, get your orders in quick for the booyah, the advance sale. If you're not in, get them in tonight. Um, and look forward to seeing everybody on Sunday.
I hear it.
Next Sunday.
I hear it's almost gone.
That's what, that's what I'm hearing.
Wow, really?
Yep. Councilmember Wong.
Well, I think, uh, Councilmember Cole, um, covered a lot of the things I was gonna cover in terms of the booyah. But yes, big shout-out to Carrie, um, and the rest of the staff for putting, um, together the Fall Roundup Parade. That was an experience for me. It was, you know, tons of people out. And, um, you know, there were a lot of cute kids around. And so people were in good spirits. So, thank you for that. Um, in terms of any other announcements, um, I don't think I have any. So, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
I don't have anything either.
What?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Thorson.
Uh, just wanted to shout out again for the parade. Uh, thank you to, uh, Carrie, especially Carrie, uh, putting it on. And Joyce, the Business Association. Uh, there's quite a few people that were involved at the last minute that, uh, should get a shout-out. I'm not sure their, their names. But, uh, there's FEMA, a couple FEMA people that helped out. Uh, just, a lot of people stepped up, stepped up at the, uh, at the, at the end there and, and really helped out in, in regards to the night of the parade. A little disappointed that Councilmember Wong ran out of candy about halfway through. We couldn't pass out anymore. But I'd like to, uh, uh, say thank you to our sponsors, and that is Amcon Construction, The American Legion Post 39, Berwald Roofing, Caring for Cats, Gary Insurance Center, Great Lake Management, Luther Auctions, M&amp;I Homes, Old National Bank, Premier Banks, Salvation Army, T. A. Shifsky and Son, Tennis Sanitation and WSB. Uh, all of them were sponsors of the parade. Being able to make it happen, like, uh, Councilmember Cole said, it was huge. You know, we had about a hundred floats at the parade, and, uh, a lot of them were paid for. Not a lot, but a, a few were paid for. And the sponsors helped in regards to making those payments. So, again, uh, just a great, great night, beautiful night, and a lot of people down there. So it's kinda nice, you know, during this COVID, uh, have a little celebration in our town. Also, like to mention the red ribbon cutting at the adult daycare. With Thor Vane and Blia Lang, uh, opening up there. Took them about two and a half years to open it up because of COVID. Construction delayed. Uh, but I wanna say a big thank you. Uh, they really appreciated our city staff, uh, especially Cynthia and Jill, uh, working in the front office there in the community development. Big shout-out to them, because they got a lot of appreciation that day, uh, from, from the family. We have a ribbon, ribbon cutting this weekend, and that's Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. That's down at Rotary Park. The council is invited for that. There will be refreshments, and they're gonna have a live entertainment down there between 11:00 and 2:00. I don't know if you've been down at the, uh, Rotary Park, but, uh, a lot of improvements have been down there. One of the major improvements is the, uh, the bathrooms, uh, year-round bathrooms down there. One of the major improvements is the bathrooms, year-round bathrooms down there. I'm sure they'll be closed during the winter, but it is a year-round facility. Is it year-round run? I don't know if, it is year-round. And I think that's all I have. So this time, if anybody else has anything they want to add, if not, motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned.